Can we all please rise for the prayer? Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Lea, here. Counsel Martin.
Here.
Counsel Mercia.
Here.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Here.
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Samaras.
Here.
Counsel Belanger.
Here.
Mayor Elliott.
Here.
Counsel Kennedy.
Here.
It's nine present.
Under mayor's business, the first is a communication, letter from the city auditor to the city council, care of city clerk, Michael Gary, over the, from Sherwood Wright, City Auditor. After over thirty-five years in municipal government, I have decided to retire. As per my contract, I am giving you over forty-five days' written notice of my plans to retire in February twenty-eighth, 2014. At this point, the audit is complete, Schedule A is complete, free cash has been certified, and the recap was approved by the budget hearing, adjusted accordingly. It has been my pleasure to be part of this team that is taking place, that has taken the city from the edge of having a control board to a city that now has healthy reserves, a balanced budget, a long-term capital plan, and a stable outlook. I wish the city and all of its wonderful people all the luck in the world in continuing the progress that has been made over these last three years. Thank you, Sherwood Wright, City Auditor. Motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Leahe, signed by Counsel Kennedy. Counsel Leahe.
Before we accept this, I just, I, you know, I want to say thank you, but I also want to just say that I'm a little disappointed. Obviously, you feel that your office is in good shape, seeing that the CFO's gone, the manager's leaving. You know, there's no, is there any way you would stay until the budget process is done, an extra month or so? I just feel that, you know, the timing of everything coming down on the city right now isn't good. So before we recognize, before we accept this, I would just ask if there's any way you thought you might stay an extra two months for the budget process.
Through you to, Madam Auditor.
Sorry. I think it's something that I'd have to have the entire council agree on, number one, and I think we'd have to have discussions offline. So if that kind of answers your question.
Well, I don't know how the council feels, I just, you know, I just want to make sure that we're in good shape for this budget season. We do, this, you're under our authority, and if, before we accept this, would we want to have a discussion in executive session or not?
Motion's on the floor and seconded to accept their resignation and place on file. Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question through you to the city auditor, and I think it's very important to this council, and I'm sorry to see you go, contrary what people thought. I actually thought you did a tremendous job, and I kind of view you as having been a professional. And in that light, seeing that you will be resigning, you know what's needed, and if you could provide this council with some sort of a list of qualifications that you would recommend, that to me would be beneficial, provide what direction the city should be going in, because I believe there is probably someone in the interim in that department that could handle it if you did leave. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay, so having said that, there are probably things that this person doesn't know that you probably do.
Correct.
So could you list those qualifications in specific areas that this council should know if you leave, that we, the next person coming in, sitting there for an interview, we want to know if they have this, these qualifications. I don't know what that is, but you do. So if you could provide that to this council, I would, that would be beneficial to us.
Absolutely.
How can we avoid being on the DOR watch list? You familiar what I'm saying?
Yes, I am.
And I want to know, how can we avoid being on that? So could you list that to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I could say something right now, though?
Sure.
Madam Auditor.
There are two things that whoever takes my place needs. Number one is munis experience. It's our financial system, and you need to know that inside and out. And the second thing is knowing municipal law. Those are the two major things.
Okay, beautiful, thank you.
I mean, I'll, I'll give you a list.
Yes.
But let me tell you, those are the two things at a minimum that somebody needs.
All right, I need to know.
Because I really want to see the city thrive.
I think what you do is very important. It kept us, it helped our bond rating to increase, and I know that. And I know that many things that you've done, probably some of us don't know that. Having been a mayor at one time, I know what to look for, and you have provided that expertise. So I thank you for that, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the city clerk. Minutes of city council meeting, January seventh, as well as meetings for the inauguration ceremony on January sixth. Motion by Counsel Rourke, signed by Counsel Milonazzo, to accept and place on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Next item is the city auditor. Communications on year-to-date budgets, December thirteenth, and grants received. Questions? Motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Samaras, seconded by Counsel Mercia. Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get into anything else, if I could suspend the rules and allow firefighter Larry Finn to address the council, it's time-sensitive. He has to, has another obligation very quickly, and if I could just do that and take my motion out of order, please.
Okay, just, so motion, just on the audit of communications, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, and the opposed, so carries. Motion to suspend the rules by Counsel Mercia, seconded by Counsel Milonazzo or Counsel Rourke to take item number three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, excuse me. Under motions, Counsel Mercia motioned. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Motion number thirty-three by Counsel Mercia. Request city council allow firefighter Larry Finn to address the city council on Winter Coat Drive. Seconded by Counsel Martin. All, Counsel Mercia, or is there someone registered to speak, Mr. Clerk?
No registered.
No, no registered to speak.
On the motions.
We'll suspend the rules to allow him to speak, because it's all about his.
Motion to suspend the rules to, to allow public to speak by Counsel Belanger, seconded by Counsel Kennedy. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, so ordered. Mr. Flynn.
Good evening. My name is Larry Finn. I'm a member of Local Eight Fifty-Three, the Lowell Fire Department. For the last eight years, we've done a winter coat drive through the fire department. The last two years were our most successful. Two years ago, we collected almost nine hundred coats, and we opened the doors at the firehouse on a Saturday in October, and we give the coats away. No paperwork, just people that need them come in and take them. This year, we've collected somewhere between five and seven hundred coats. We opened the doors at nine o'clock in the morning. At eight fifteen, there were already people standing outside the door. By one-thirty in the afternoon, we were out of coats. We ran out of kids' coats, and it concerned me. So I took the name of a few kids and their sizes, and through a friend at Alan Mello Dodge, we bought them brand-new coats. So I thought about it a little bit. I come from a family of thirteen. When we were growing up, we had everything we needed. My parents were very loving parents, food on the table, clothes on our back. And our aunt, who lived downstairs from us, Pat Finn, every year, she bought us a brand-new winter coat. So my thought was to have a penny drive from February first till October first. So I got permission from the chief, every firehouse is going to have a three-gallon jug with a sign on it, Penny Drive for Coats. So we encourage families and people of the city to stop by the firehouse with their kids, see the fire trucks, and drop their pennies in. And I have an account opened at Enterprise Bank and at the Lowell Firefighters Club. And every penny will be used to buy brand-new winter coats for kids for next year. So my plan is to go to every school in the city between now and then, and I'm going to ask them to make me a list of the ten kids who need coats the most, and then another list with ten more, and hopefully we can buy hundreds of coats. If anyone wants to donate to the cause above and beyond, the two accounts are there. The name on the account is Coats From and Above. The reason why I named that is I lost my mom five years ago to Alzheimer's. But her and my dad taught me to give back, and I think that the people of the city will come forward and help with this. And so I bring it to the council, hoping that we can spread the word and raise thousands of dollars. And I've already contacted L.L. Bean, Coles, Burlington Coat Factory. So what I'm going to try to do is in September, October, have a day where the people can actually come there with their children and pick out the coat and leave with it, and then we'll write out a check to the stores. I think that if you let a kid pick out his own coat, he's going to wear it for the rest of the year. If his mom brings him home a coat from the coat drive, January, that thing's going to get lost. I know that for a fact, little story. My mother, when we were kids, my mother bought us all rubbers to wear to school. She bought all my brothers and sisters brown ones. I got red ones. I didn't wear them to school. Well, thank you very much for listening, and I really encourage people to come by the firehouse, show the kids the trucks, and the pennies will add up, they really will. I really think it'll work, so thank you.
Great idea. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Finn. Counsel Mercia.
I just want to thank the Finn family, especially Mickey and Ann, for bringing up thirteen wonderful, wonderful children. And I, we talk about, we get our names in the paper, our pictures in the paper. It isn't about us, it's about the silent majority, such as Larry Finn and his family that do tremendous work around here and look for nothing in return. Your father coached the youth of our city for many, many years. It's just, this is why we say that Lowell is a remarkable city, because people such as the Fins and many others that we probably don't even know about, they do yeoman's work to make this a better city. And see, just that little example of what happened to you growing up, multiplied for you to do something as you get older. So I, I hope that everybody gets together, and we will promote this, not just tonight. We will promote this, because sometimes people forget, and we will promise you that we will from time to time bring it in. So thank you, Larry, thank you for your hard work, thanks.
Okay. No motion needed. Moving back to, moving back to item number four, unfinished business. Counselor Mercia's motion regarding Nativity Restoration Fund setup. Motion by Counsel Belanger, seconded by Counsel Rourke. On the motion, Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is unfinished business relating to last Tuesday's motion regarding the nativity restoration and those who wish to donate to the restoration fund. And I was referred to the city manager, but knowing he has enough on his plate, I took it upon myself to set up a fund for this to happen. The nativity figures are in horrible disrepair. We all know that. I don't think it's up to the city or their obligation to repair that or to have a fund or to pay from city budgets or whatever. I think it's, it's a call for the community to come together and try to donate some money. And with the help of Deb Belanger from the CVB, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Amy Werner from Lowell Five, we welcome anyone who wishes to donate by sending a donation to any Lowell Five Cent Savings Bank. This is one, there's one at Thirty-four John Street. There's another one at Stadium Plaza on Ten Main Street at the Demoulis Market in Tewksbury. Actually, there are sixteen locations. You could send your donation to any of those places, make the check payable to the CVB. That would be the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but simply put CVB on the check, because Deb Belanger and the CVB were gracious enough to let us use their tax ID number. In the check notation, you may write the intention of your check being Nativity Restoration Fund, so that's a good thing. And so I will be promoting this right along as well, thanks to the Lowell Five for allowing us to open up a savings account there for this restoration. I also wanted to say that if the stable is in disrepair, Youth Build has offered to repair anything needed there. They're certified, OSHA-10 certified. They will have a construction manager that has taught them, so this isn't going to cost the city money. And I think it's just that important to restore a tradition that was here since I was a child. And God knows, if I was a child and took part in that, it's a very old tradition, so thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. So just to recap, Counsel Mercia, anyone can make a donation at any Lowell Five Bank?
Yeah, there's sixteen locations.
Sixteen locations, and all they do is write the check to CVB for Nativity Saint.
Yes, a notation, a Nativity Restoration Fund. They already know about it, and, and we did make a few donations already, and people have done that, so thank you very much.
And I forward you the information, the mayor's office received a phone call from, from a religious organization wanting to participate in that.
Thank you.
Motion to accept, motion or read accept and place on file by Counsel Belanger, seconded by Counsel Kennedy. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, so ordered. Still have some time before the public hearing. Moving on to item number seven. Oh, excuse me, item number five. Ordinance amending Section Two-Two-Two Point One-Five Panhandling in the downtown Lowell Historic District. Motion to, this, this is going to be referred to a public hearing on February fourth at seven PM. So motion away the full reading by Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Leahe. Second reading by title, ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the city of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter Two-Two-Two entitled Peace and the Good Order by amending Two-Two-Two Point One-Five entitled Panhandling in the downtown Lowell Historic District.
There is a registered speaker. Malburn Moran.
If it's going to a public hearing, then I would wait till February seventh. Fourth, sorry, thank you. But I'll just wait till then, because I hope it's going to public hearing, I assume.
Okay, yep, we'll be here on February fourth, correct. Request that we recognize Counsel, the city solicitor, did you want to be recognized?
I just wanted to note that while this is just being sent off anyway to be advertised for a public hearing, I, I will provide the council with an update later on this evening in our other session with respect to related matters.
Okay. All those in favor sending the, sending this to a public hearing signify, ah, motion, we already, motion by Counsel Belanger, seconded by Counsel Kennedy. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Not, not, next item is a public hearing, but wait till seven o'clock. Moving on to the city manager's portion of the agenda. Item number seven, communications from city manager, responses to city council motions and requests. Counsel Martin and Counsel Milonazzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This wasn't in the packet, but was on our desk tonight about the snow and ice expenditures to date. So, you know, is I, is the shortfall about eight hundred thousand, is that?
At this time.
Mr. Manager.
Ah, no, excuse me, excuse me.
Still surplus.
We have a surplus of about eight hundred thousand. Thank you. All right, so we're still, we're still looking good. If it continues raining for the rest of the winter, we'll, we'll be all right. The, the budget was one million, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, and the year-to-date expended is five fifty-seven.
And what about the encumbrances, what's?
Madam Auditor.
If I may.
Madam Auditor.
Those basically represent all the contracts and stuff that they have, so they won't necessarily spend it, but once they have a contract, they put up a purchase order for it.
Okay, and could I just, and then one other, why do we have four separate accounts? Is the, I mean, I get the overtime is, is different, but.
It's always been budgeted like that, you know, one's for basically professional services, one's supposedly for, for buying the ice, the ice, yeah. You don't want to buy ice, the salt and the sand, and then miscellaneous charges.
Mr. Manager.
Just, just to add to the auditor's response, it's, it's really just for accounting purposes so we know exactly what's being spent for what, for those categories. We do have flexibility within this account, though, if, you know, the, there's money, there's surplus in one area of, like, contractors, but we need more sand, we can move that money over to, to take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Counsel Kennedy.
Excuse me. Item E, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager. Item E was a response to my motion regarding the lighting for Sheehy Park.
Correct.
And I guess you sent a letter to Chancellor Mean.
Right, we've been in touch, I just wanted to give you a status report on that, that it's, we've been in touch with the chancellor, and we'll be talking to them about, you know, actual moving forward with some improvements.
Well, how are those talks going so far? I mean, it's, what's the likelihood here? Is it, should some members of the city council call Chancellor, Chancellor Mean, or did Chancellor Mean indicate that he would, he thought it was a good idea?
We haven't had a formal discussion on it yet. We started with this to start the ball rolling, and then he'll have his people look at it, and then that letter will be sent out, I'm sure, to his staff, and they'll come back to him with a response, and then we'll get a, an answer from him.
Also, Counsel Kennedy. Okay, and Counsel Milonazzo.
Just quickly, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager. Item A was response to a motion by Mayor Murphy, the tree canopy issue on New Hall Street, and there are twenty-nine residents in the neighborhood that actually signed a petition to have the trees removed and then the sidewalks repaired. Is it my understanding the sidewalk, the trees have been removed, the sidewalks have been repaired?
Yes.
At, at this time?
Correct.
Okay, based upon this, and they were offered, I believe, shade trees, but they've decided not to go that direction. But again, based upon the fact that twenty-nine residents did sign this, I just wanted to put it out there that the trees were removed, the sidewalks were repaired.
All of that was done, and there was the request to the resident, those residents that there not be any additional trees installed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on communications, city manager? Motion to accept by Counsel Mercia, seconded by Counsel Milonazzo, to accept and place on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, so ordered. Being after seven o'clock, we'll go into the public hearing section of the agenda. Utility public hearings, item number six, National Grid. This is continuance from last week, Mr. Clerk, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, National Grid frustrating underground electric conduit at five-eighty Chelmsford Street. We'll move to open up the public hearing. Those wishing to speak in favor, in favor. Could you please give me your name and address?
Yep, Michelle Stacy, Drake at Mass. Representative for National Grid, we're looking to place conduit and wires from the existing pole fifty-three to power the Housing Authority building at five-eighty Chelmsford Street.
Questions? Counsel Lea, Counsel Martin.
Is there any digging involved at this time? Say there's going to be some digging and then replacement of.
Say there's going to be some digging and then replacement of cement or?
Yeah, they replace anything that they dig up, they will replace it.
So, is there a, can you not dig at this time, or you can dig?
Can't cut into pavement at this point in time. When is the, this is probably planned for later in the year?
Yeah, it depends on the weather. I mean, just because it's the winter doesn't mean they can't do it, it just depends on weather.
Generally, we say no.
Yeah, well, it would be up to you.
It would be up to the city engineer.
Right, exactly.
And the city engineer is very strict about that.
Exactly.
Okay, I was just curious because I just wanted to get, I had asked about East Merrimack Street, so I didn't know if that was under the same guidelines.
Right.
We need something done up there, right?
Correct, fire up, yes.
Between High Street and Fayette Street, so.
Right, there's some digging that's needed there, but that's, and that will have to wait until the, the spring. Same with this proposal.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Martin, did you have a question?
Move to refer to the wire inspector for report and recommendation.
Okay, all right, so I've got to, we'll close, so those wishing to, in favor, anyone else in favor? Okay, we'll close that portion of the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Opposition? We'll close that portion of the hearing. Motion by Council Martin, seconded by Council Mersey to refer this to the wire inspector for report and recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, so ordered. Thank you. Item number eight, order 60-day trial. Motion to waive the full reading by Council Belanger, seconded by Council Kennedy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, so ordered. Second reading by title in city council pursuant to chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts concerning section 266-6, there are entitled temporary experimental regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of 60 days. What is the wish of the body?
Move approval.
Move approval by Council Mersey, seconded by Council Martin. Roll call.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mersey?
Yes.
Council Malanazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaris?
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Nine yeas, motion carries. Item number nine, vote, declare surplus 72.1, foul road, and authorize the city manager execute a lease agreement for two years between the city and the YMCA. Motion to waive the full reading by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Malanazo. Second reading by title, vote in city council declaring the property of 72.1 foul road surplus and authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with the Young Women's Christian Association and to execute all documents necessary for the lease of the property. What is the wish of the council?
Move approval.
Move approval by Council Leahy, seconded by Council Martin. Roll call.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mersey?
Yes.
Council Malanazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaris?
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Mayor Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Item number 10, an order to discontinue a portion of Worcester Road. Motion to waive full reading by Council Samaris, seconded by Council Rourke. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed, so ordered.
Is there a vote on this?
No, this has to go to a public hearing. So, I motion, motion to refer to a public hearing on February 4th, 2014, at 7:00 PM by Council Leahy, seconded by Council Kennedy. On the motion, Council Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted a little clarification. The order is to discontinue a portion of Worcester Road, and I think that last week, Council Malanazo made a motion to have it be the whole, all of Worcester Road. And so maybe the city solicitor or the director of the Division of Planning and Development could explain if there are advantages or disadvantages to one or the other.
Mr. Baiki or?
If I could, just some response to Council Kennedy's?
Council Malanazo?
Comments, he's absolutely correct. I did make that comment, but it turns out that it is only a portion, as I now understand it, it's not all the way to the Merrimack River, but I would certainly defer to Assistant City Manager Baiki.
Mr. Baiki?
Yeah, I think, basically, what Council Malanazo said is correct. The petition that was filed, this is a response to a private petition, the petition that was filed is only for the section of it that's located between Andover Street and Surrey Lane, and that's the version that has been brought forward to this evening. There is another portion to the north of Surrey Lane that actually was abandoned some time ago, I think in about 2001, by vote of the city council at that time. There may be another portion even further north that has yet to be abandoned, but that's really not in discussion in conjunction with this petition.
Further questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, motion was made, and seconded, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. In the opposed, motion carries. Item number 11, vote, apply, accept, and expend $200,000 US EPA Brown's Fields Assessment Grant and a $1 million US EPA Brown's Fields Revolving Loan Fund. Motion to waive the full reading by Council Kennedy, seconded by Council Belanger. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, motion carries. Second reading by title, vote in city council, authorizing the city manager acting through the Department of Planning and Development to apply for, accept, and expend a grant in the amount of $1 million from the US Environmental Protection Agency for a Brown's Fields Revolving Loan Fund Grant, and to apply for and accept and expend a grant in the amount of 200,000 from the US Environmental Protection Agency for Brown's Fields Assessment. Motion by, by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Malanazo. Discussion? Roll call.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mersey?
Yes.
Council Malanazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaris?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Mayor Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Nine yeas, motion carries. Moving on to the agenda, item number 12, communication, appoint Shannon Norton Calley's Library trustee. Motion by Council Mersey, seconded by Council Rourke. Roll call.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mersey?
Yes.
Council Malanazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaris?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Mayor Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Item number 13, another communication. Communication is to appoint Melissa Carino, ZBA, to fill unexpired term of Cory Belanger. Motion by Council Samaris, seconded by Council Rourke. To approve, roll call.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mersey?
Yes.
Council Malanazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaris?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Mayor Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Nine yeas, motion carries. Item number 14, communication, resignation of Michael Zane from the Lowell Housing Authority and Crime Stoppers, Inc. Motion to accept resignation by Council Martin, seconded by Council Leahy. Motion to accept and place on file. All those in favor signify by, oh, Councilor Kennedy?
Could I just ask, Mr. Zane served two full terms, I think, on the housing authority, so that's like 10 years, right?
Correct.
How, does he, you just send a letter out thanking him for?
I have, yes.
You've already done that?
Yes.
You just do that all the time, we don't have to mention that to you, I guess, right?
Right.
For the next few weeks, we don't have to do that. That's all.
Okay, Council Belanger?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager. Mr. Mayor, has a position been advertised or posted to this point yet?
Yes, it has, and I've already interviewed one person, I have a couple other interviews already scheduled as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. In the opposed, motion carries. Next item is an ordinance to create a new position and salary, one outreach worker for the Health Department. This is grant-funded. Motion to waive the full reading by Council Malanazo, seconded by Council Rourke. Second reading by title, ordinance in city council, an ordinance creating one new position and salary of outreach worker at the Health Department. Motion to refer this item to a public hearing on January 28th by Council Belanger, seconded by Council Kennedy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, the motion carries. Item number 16, creating an ordinance, create new positions and salaries, one NIBRS tracking analyst, one computer technician, one training administrator, and one reentry manager in the Police Department. These are grant-funded. Motion to waive the full reading by Council Leahy, seconded by Council Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, motion carries. Second reading, motion to refer this to, second reading by title, in ordinance in city council, ordinance creating one NIBRS tracking analyst, one computer technician, one training administrator, and one reentry manager at full-time, grant-funded positions and establishing the salaries in the Police Department. Motion by Council Kennedy, seconded by Council Leahy, to send this to a public hearing on January 28th. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Kennedy?
Unless there's an objection from a member of the council, I would move that items 17, 18, and 19 also be referred to a public hearing together.
Motion by Council Kennedy, seconded by Council Belanger to take items 17, 18, and 19. They are all referred on the same public hearing date. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. In the opposed, so ordered.
There's a registered speaker on number 17. Victoria Woodley.
Hi, I'm Victoria Woodley, the Director of the Library. I wasn't sure this is going to go to public hearing. So, on item 17, where it says create a new position and salary for a literacy director, I actually have somebody doing this job already, but it had a different title, and I want to add personnel to that department, and so what I've done is essentially asked him to rewrite the job description, same job description, new title. So, there's nothing really new about this, but the title. So, that's what I was going to say at the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, any, any other discussion? I will just read the titles of all these, and then we'll send it to the same, to the public hearing. So, the first is ordinance, create a new position and salary, part-time temporary literacy director, Pollard Memorial Library, grant-funded. Item number 18 is the ordinance to amend position and salary, director of elections, to director of elections, municipal hearing officer, and delete existing position of municipal hearing claims investigated law department. Item number 19, the ordinance create new position salary for two principal clerks in the Department of Planning and Development. All of, all those three, those three items will be sent, referred to a public hearing. Motion by Council Malanazo, seconded by Council Mersey, to send a public hearing on February 11th at 7:00 PM. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, so ordered.
Last three.
Next item is reports on the subcommittee. There are no, no subcommittee reports yet. I hope to have the subcommittee assignments out this week. It's been a little, little bit of a busy week. I have worked on them, I've met with and spoken to all the members. I'll hope to have them out by the end of the week. But for the special meeting, there's no objection. I can give a brief recap of the meeting, the special meeting that was held before this For the viewing public, there was a meeting at 5:30 to discuss the establishment of and selection procedures for the next city manager, as well as a city auditor. Those two items were on the agenda. There was discussion on the city managers' portion of the agenda regarding establishing a salary, a salary and language associated that will be included in, in the advertisement. There was discussion on job description and what should be included. The director of human resources will be providing the members of the council with additional information. There was discussion on what methods, what media outlets should be used to advertise that, as well as professional organizations, along with a timetable, a deadline for the receipt of applications of February 28th for that position. The council will meet again at a special meeting next Tuesday. I would, I recommended or suggested it'd be at 5:00 PM instead of 5:30. The clerk is going to post that, that special meeting. At that time, we're going to take the city auditor portion, the city auditor position up for discussion relative to salary range, where to post it, all the similar items that were discussed for the city manager. I'm not sure if other members have anything else to add. Council Mersey and Council Samaris also, we will discuss the citizen participation component to the process, the selection process, and that will also be discussed at the next special meeting next Tuesday. So, members, feel free to, to include any additional information, but that is a, that is a report from the special meeting held prior to this. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Council Malanazo, seconded by Council Rourke, Council Samaris? No? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, general petitions. Item number 21, claims. There are four claims for property damage. Motion to refer to the law department by, by Council Samaris, seconded by Council Malanazo. All those in favor, report to the law department for report and recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, so ordered. Council Leahy on the motion?
Yes, thank you. Through you, maybe to the city solicitor. Out of the four petitions, there's one on there for property damage. Can we make sure that we get a report on that?
Madam Solicitor?
Sure, which, which, which claim?
The one for Westview Road? Sometimes we just, they're auto or whatever claims, and we never really see the results, but on this one here, I'd like to see what's going on with that.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Further questions on the claims for property damage? All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, so ordered. Item number 22, under miscellaneous petitions, Dara's Jeffroy. Jeffroy requests handicap parking sign at 338 University Ave Lowell, Mass. Motion to refer to the traffic engineer by Council Mersey, seconded by Council Malanazo. Council Mersey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to amend that and ask for a 60-day trial on that one.
Motion to amend by Council Mersey, seconded by Council Belanger. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, on the, on the original motion to send this to the traffic engineer, all those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, motion carries. Item, moving on to the motion section of the agenda. We already did number 23. Number 24, joint motion by Council Mersey and Council Belanger. Request city manager have independent audit performed on all city finances before the hiring of an interim or permanent city auditor. Second by Council?
It doesn't need a second.
No second needed, there were two, two members made, motions made. Council Mersey and Council Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As this council was made aware of the auditor's departure through retirement, I feel it is only right, as perhaps does Council Belanger, to suggest that this council have the books audited by a neutral professional party, and I'm, I'm putting a caveat in there, meaning not Powers and Sullivan. not Powers and Sullivan, only because if the books are found to be straight and, and right, which I'm sure they probably will be, I don't want any appearance that, oh, well, of course, because Powers and Sullivan did it, it's someone that we, you know, have working for the city anyway, so that's why I'm putting that in there. I would also suggest that we find a qualified person to perform this service. This council should choose the auditing firm, so as not to leave any stones unturned with the hiring of a new auditor. If we have the books audited, we protect the people in place today. This motion is in the best interest of everyone involved, specifically the city auditor, and this is the way I think that things should be done, so it's only a matter of housekeeping, I would say. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Belanger?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in agreement to, what I, first, what I'd like to do is thank Madam Auditor for her service here to the city law. You were part of a great financial team on board. Thank you for your service. But nonetheless, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to convey to my colleagues that I think this petition is appropriate. It's, I think it's important for an audit to be performed, for the, when the new auditor that comes in, he or she's going to want this performed in the first place. So, I think we'll be way ahead of the game by doing this. I don't want this motion to be perceived as we're raising a flag here. I don't think there's anything wrong or anything, I don't suspect any thing of that nature whatsoever. It's mainly to have, as Council Mercy stated, to have a house and order, and I think it's only fair, we owe it to the new incoming auditor, so I do support this. Thank you very much.
Council Malanazo, Council Martin, and Council Leahy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we do this anyway. I believe that, you know, we do have an independent audit done every year. By virtue of what was just, was written in the city auditor's letter informing us that she's retiring, the city finances are in very good shape. I don't see the need for the, you know, for an independent audit, because it's already being done, so it'd just be extra cost to the taxpayers to have someone come in. I, I want to believe that was, there's nothing malicious behind this motion, but at the same time, I guess I don't understand why it's being brought forward in light of the fact that the reports that we've gotten from the third-party auditors have been very good. We've closed the books, we've set the tax rate, the city, the previous city council has done a very good job, in my opinion, working with the administration, with the city auditor. So, again, I'm not going to support the motion. I think it's a cost that we don't, we don't have to incur, and I have put my faith in the past in the city auditor, and I will not be supporting the motion. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Council Martin?
Thank you. Do you know, Mr. Manager or Madam, what, what's the annual cost of Powers and Sullivan?
I believe the annual cost of Powers and Sullivan is somewhere between $100 and $120,000.
It's $94,000.
$94,000. And, which is a, a very good price for...
Right.
I think, I think we looked at some other communities and what they pay, and they're a little bit more north of that.
You know, so, I mean, this is a substantial undertaking and, and audit of the city books, and in fact, I think Council Malanazo is right. I think we do do it every year. This is an outside, independent firm who is critical of things they see. It's, it's never a perfect audit. There's always a management letter with items to be addressed, and I think this auditor in particular has made some progress, at least on those items that relate to her office. So, again, I, I agree kind of with the sentiments of Council Malanazo. We're, we're doing this already, we're paying a significant amount of money for it, and, you know, I don't know, I'm assuming we'd have to pay something comparable, maybe even more, for a one-time thing. So, I just don't see the need for this expense when we have, you know, we get audit reports every year, they're studied extensively, at least in my time on the Finance Subcommittee, they get a careful review. We have the auditors come in, sometimes with the Subcommittee, sometimes with the full council, sometimes both. I fully expect that process to continue, and any deficiencies would be noted in that audit. So, again, I don't know what, what, what we're trying to do with someone other than the current auditors that we have under contract.
Council Leahy?
Thank you. That was just, my question also was, through you to the auditor, we, when was the last day of the last audit again?
It was June 30th of last year, and we received it in December, but the auditors are actually still here, working on some departmental reviews, and they're scheduled to be back here in May to start the prep work for the 14th audit.
Okay. And then I just threw you to the manager for checks and balances, do we automatically do any type of book accounting when someone leaves, whether it's clerk's office, treasurer's office, something like that? Is that kind of standard procedure to...
No, it has not been standard procedure to, to do that, no.
I mean, I think it's a good idea. In this case, with the timeline and everything, I'm not sure. I didn't realize that's a significant amount of money to audit the books.
Mr. Manager?
It, it, that's what a community this size would run, probably a little, you know, somewhat in excess of $100,000. The other issue that would, would play into that is the ti, the speed at which you want it done. That would likely result in an increase in cost, because you'd want it done before an interim or permanent auditor was brought on, and by the time they got it done, the books would actually be closed, and you'd have, be beginning the next annual audit, which starts on the books that close June 30th of 2014, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Mercier, then Council Samaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To put the word malicious in a sentence and signify that you think this motion wouldn't be malicious, makes me almost feel like you think it would be malicious. But I just want to allude to the fact of when the auditor was coming into this room here, the very first thing she said to me was, "Thank you for this wonderful motion." If I thought, if she thought it was malicious, I don't think she would have said that. I'm saying this for the protection of the auditor, not to be malicious. And, and through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city auditor, Cheryl, what did you say when you came through this room to me?
Madam Auditor?
Um, I, I said, "Thank you for the motion," because...
Okay, "thank you for the motion," is what you said, because it would clear you, wouldn't it? I wouldn't want to hire, this council is not responsible for a lot of departments, but we are responsible for you, and this is the point that we made this motion, or at least I made this motion for this reason, that I want to hire someone that comes in that don't say, "Oh, my God, there was, this funds was off," and this. I don't believe that it is. So, I'm doing it to protect you, is what I'm doing it, and I'm doing it to protect the person coming in. It's like having an occupancy permit that a landlord has, and they, they have the city inspector come in and look at the apartment to say that everything is up to par, so that when some derelict tenant that you don't know about in a month says, "Well, I moved here, this was broken, that was broken," I don't want that to happen to you, and that's why I'm making this motion. And to put the word in there malicious, makes me a little bit malicious-minded to think that it's in there, but be that as it may, I support this motion, and I would ask for a roll call.
Council Samaras?
I can, I can understand what you mean by, I've heard from Belanger, that's sort of standard process, but I think some clarification has to be on the process of the specific detail.
Just a little bit more. So, I mean, is it something that's always, always in play, or is it something that's just happens within a couple of months?
Madam Auditor?
They usually come in in May, and by the time we get the final report, it's December, and then they come back in January and do departmental.
Okay, so this...
Reviews. It's kind of like, and then, yeah, then they'll be back next May.
So, the previous city council, I mean, had assessed, their, your work for the past year was assessed?
Yes.
And all the findings were made, everybody was made aware?
Correct.
This particular point? Okay. Thank you. Council Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think the, I think the motion by Council Mercier and Council Belanger is a well-intentioned motion, and I think that, I think that it's a good idea, but I also think that maybe it's premature, and given that we do an audit every year, and that the, it, it might be wise to wait until the new auditor is hired, and then see whether or not the new auditor thought that it was necessary to do an additional audit, rather than just to go ahead and do one when it doesn't seem like it's all that necessary. I think the, the, and, excuse me if I'm misinterpreting the intent, but I think the intent of the, the audit would be to create a separation between the tenure of the present auditor, auditor, and the new auditor. And all I'm suggesting is that, that maybe this is a little bit premature, and that this could be part of the discussion when the new city auditor is hired. So, I would like to move, in substitution, that we delay action on this motion until such time as the new city auditor is hired, and then take it up then and see whether or not that person that's hired thinks it's a good idea, and this, this might be, not be necessary, but it is going to take a lot of time, it is going to cost money, and it is, there's different levels of audits that you can have, and so, you know, there has to be a discussion about that, and so maybe that discussion would be, be more fruitful if it was done when the, when the new auditor was hired. So, I'd, I'd move in substitution that we delay action until that time.
Motion by Council Kennedy to substitute. Second? Second? Second by Council Martin on the motion. Council Rourke?
Mr. Matthew to the manager. Mr. Manager, does the same independent audit do the audit every year, is the same, same auditor that comes in independently and does it on a yearly basis?
It comes up for renewal every so many years, but we have used Powers and Sullivan for some time now in the city of Lowell. Yes, they're one of, there's really only a handful of big accounting, audit firms or accounting firms that do municipal accounts. Powers and Sullivan is one, Melanson &amp; Heath is another, Rogers &amp; Sullivan is another.
So, the city's not tied to them doing the audit?
No, we, the, the city can change at some point in time, absolutely.
What would be wrong with using a different auditor to do the audit, and then hopefully the, the price that concerns councilors could be offset, because you're going to do it anyway?
Well, if you cha, right, if you changed auditors, you mean for the annual audit that we do, you could, you could do that. What's the, maybe the auditor knows what the current status is of the contract.
Through 14.
Madam Auditor?
Through 14.
Through 14.
So, they would, they're scheduled to do the 14, which ends June 30th, and then there's a, another, then the city council could choose another auditor at that time.
I'm not sure there's a timing issue or not with, you know, if, instead of using what we use now, you know, it just affects the original motion to use a different auditor to get that done, and the taxpayers wouldn't be any less hurt by doing an audit.
Right.
Thank you.
If I... Council, Council Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The intent of the motion, okay, is to save time. I'm thinking, an auditor that's going to come through the door, he or she is going to want those numbers confirmed. I'm sorry, that's just what I think. It's my opinion, so I don't want somebody to walk in the store after we go through that whole process and say, "Yes, I think we should do an audit. I need an audit to make sure these numbers, these figures I have in front of me are confirmed." Then we're behind the eight ball. So, as far as being malicious, I'm not even going to comment on that or feed into that comment, in, in all honesty. So, the intent of the motion is to save time, have the new auditor come in and get right down to business here, and have that performed and everything confirmed. That's the intent of the motion, and this amendment here, I think, puts us back to where we're going to be. So, I like to, you know, I, I won't support Council Kennedy's amendment. I think we need to do this, get this audit performed, so when this individual walks in, everything is in front of them, black and white, they're ready to go and do their job. That's the intent of the motion, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Council Malanazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, as I said earlier, we're actually in the process of doing this independent audit come May. It's going, it's going to be done. For us now to go out and put a proposal out in the, in the general audit community is going to take time. You can't just pick up the phone and say, "I'm going to call ABC Audit Firm." You have to do a request for proposal, a request for qualifications. It's going to cost $90,000 to $100,000. Where is that money coming, coming from? It's not in the budget, I believe, right now. And again, I, I understand from, from a business point of view why this is being brought forward, but I, again, don't see the need, because the numbers have already been for last year, have already been confirmed, and for this year, they're going to be done in May, and we've had a qualified auditor for the last few years here, working with, a number of city councils, working with this administration, working with Powers and Sullivan. So, again, I understand the intent of the motion, but again, I don't see why we would do it now.
No objection from members, I just have a question to the auditor. How, so we're in our second year of a three-year contract with Powers and Sullivan. We're going into the, I thought they were staying through...
[inaudible].
Okay, so, they are, they've audited the books twice already under the contract, and we have one more. And how long has Powers and Sullivan been the auditor for the city?
They were here before I was, so I honestly don't know how long, but I think for quite a while.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Was there other questions by, oh, I'm sorry. Madam Solicitor?
Right, I was just going to point out that the, depending on what the intent of the, of the council is, that could be an issue with respect to the ability of the city to even switch auditors, given the contract. So, we'd have to take a look at contract language to see if it's, you know, with cause or without cause for a contract of this, of this type.
Council Rourke?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the auditor. Madam Auditor, if you were going into a, a new job, you know, coming to Lowell, to a different city, would you want this done ahead of time, an independent audit done before you came in?
I wish it was done here before I came here.
Thank you.
Okay. On the motion, request for, on the substitute motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Kennedy?
If I could, I just would like to get a little clarification. We, we're midway through a fiscal year right now. So, and we're, and the previous fiscal year is being audited currently. Is that right?
No, that's, that's...
That's all wrapped up.
That's all wrapped up.
Except that they're still in doing, looking at departments.
Just the departmental reviews, right.
So, I guess what I would ask is, what exactly is this audit going to entail, and what level of detail would it be? And how, you know, how long do you expect that it's going to take? Is, those would be just three? That would help me, that would help me with my vote, assuming that the substitute motion fails, but, so can anybody answer that?
To the maker of the motions, Council Mercier?
Well, I would say that it would be my idea to just audit each department and see how the books are transpiring, if they're balanced out, and if, I don't think that we need to, you know, have a full court press on every single department, but just to go into like a scan of every department and see how the books are coming. As, as, through you, Mr. Mayor, as to the Cheryl, Madam Auditor, what would you look for if you were coming on board? How would you like them to have proceeded to clear the way for you?
Well, I think the difference is, I know that the books are in good shape now. When I got here, the books really weren't in good shape, and I think there's a big difference there.
Yeah, but the person coming in doesn't know that.
Right.
So, what would you suggest?
I would suggest to have our, the, the auditors that we currently have a contract with to come in earlier and start their prep work now.
And how long would that take? How long does that take?
Well, they usually come in for a couple of weeks to do their prep work. They do all their testing and stuff like that.
Okay.
Then they'll, then they'd come back after the, the books closed. And then, you were talking about going into departments. I, I've been doing that. I, I give you quarterly reports on checking out departments themselves, so...
All I'm asking for is to someone come in here and do the books to clear the way for the next person. I'm probably sure that they'll be fine, but this person coming in doesn't know that, and I don't want to hear from the person that, gee, this wasn't right, and this, you know what you've done, and, and you would have liked that done to you, you said, before you even got here.
Correct.
So, I don't see the big problem here.
Further discussion? Council Leahy?
Thank you. I can see the intent of the motion, but as, what I said before, checks and balances, so through you to the manager. I mean, would this be a good idea? Is there a type of a quick type of analysis that we can do so that, you know, just to make sure that the person going out and the person coming in are on the same page? Do you find it really not necessary? I mean, it just, it sounds like a good... I mean, it just, it sounds like a good checks and balances type of maneuver that I would think anything that entails money you would do when it changes hands, so.
Right, I think that, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to say exactly. I think I agree with the auditor. I think the best scenario is to have the current auditors who are independent, and they have to put their name on these reports and their professional credentials, have them come in early, perhaps, and get to a certain point, start that work early, get to a certain point, that then when the new auditor comes in, they can work with that auditor on any additional work that they identify. I think that, you know, Ms. Wright, when she came in, identified a number of things that the auditor, she was able to work with the auditors to make the corrections. But I think if you start that process now, then that would serve the same purpose that Counselor Mercier and Counselor Belanger are trying to do, and would still be affordable and, I think importantly, timely. Counsel Malanazo made the point that there's a procurement process here. We would have to go out to bid or get some pricing. That would take some time. You can't just get it within a few days. You'd have to get it over a period of time. Then they would have to, a selection would have to be made, and then by the time they got in here, we'd essentially be at the point that the existing auditors would be doing their work. So I think it, that's the quickest way to get that work done, and the most financially advantageous way to get the work done.
Thank you. So if the original makers of the motion would agree to that, I think that would be a good compromise.
That's more or less the intent. That's fine.
Yes, well done, Mr. Manager. I would agree on that.
Okay, so there was a substitute, substitute motion on the floor by Counsel Kennedy? Motion was drawn, the motion by Counsel Kennedy, second by person to second of the motion.
So what happened, so what are we trying to do then? We're going to vote this to do this? It's, what's going to happen, the original motion?
Okay, well, if the, if the substitution was withdrawn, we would revert back to the original motion, and on the original motion, would the maker of the motion want to amend, amend their motion?
Yes, yes, we would. Would you want to strike out the word independent, but they, Powers &amp; Sullivan isn't an independent auditor, auditing firm, aren't they?
They are an independent.
So what's the problem with the?
So can we dispose of the substitute first? Motion withdrawn and accepted by?
Before I withdraw the substitute motion, my understanding is that the motion that will, that will be before us then is basically that we would use the auditors that we have now, but just ask them to start early. Is that the?
Right, right.
Correct, but that'll have to amend this motion, so. Mr. Clerk, motion has been withdrawn, second has been withdrawn. To the original motion, maker of the motion, do you want to make an amendment to that?
Right.
To your motion?
Yes.
Okay. So the original motion is, request manager have independent audit performed on all city finances before the hiring of an interim or permanent city auditor. To amend that, we will amend it to have the current independent audit firm initiate audit in, on an earlier, in an earlier timeframe.
Right, yes, absolutely.
On all city finances before the hiring of an interim or permanent city auditor.
Yeah, that's right. Yes, that's perfect.
Correct? Motion by Counsel Mercier, second by Counsel Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Item number fifty, twenty-five, by Counsel Malanazo. Request city manager to consider staying through the completion of the FY-15 budget process. Second? Second by Counsel Martin. Counsel Malanazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of the fact that we currently don't have a chief financial officer, in light of the fact that, after much discussion, in acceptance of her letter of resignation, our city auditor is retiring in February, I bring this motion forward in an attempt to ask the city manager to consider staying until the FY-15 budget has been completed. And again, that could be, that could be in April, that could be in May, depending upon how quickly we can get the department head information gathered and continue moving forward with the FY-15 budget. We've all talked about the fact that the city's finances have been stabilized over the last few years, again, due to the good work of the past city councils, as well as the city manager, the former chief financial officer, and the members of the finance team. We can all boast that the budget is really an award-winning budget that has, has really grown over the years to really give us a very good illustration of the city's finances, the fact that we now have reserves in place, the fact that we are now moving down the road on a very aggressive capital plan, and the fact that I feel that the city manager's strengths have been, and have been, as others have said, has been in the area of municipal finance. So the motion is just to have him consider staying until the budget has been, has been completed. He did say, when he read his letter of resignation last, last week, that he would be leaving March 10th and audit for the new city manager to be able to work with numbers that have been compiled and put together, his or her own, own budget, which, again, I can appreciate and respect that opinion, but the fact that we don't have a CFO, the city auditor is leaving, I think that we obviously have someone in, city manager Lynch, who does have the expertise to work with the department heads as they gather the information to put together the FY-15 budget. So I would ask my colleagues to consider supporting this motion to have the city manager stay through the completion of the, of the budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. Mr. Manager, you said that you would stay under certain conditions, but I can't support something unless I know what those certain conditions are, so what would that be?
Well, I think I'd like to, first, I prefer to listen and hear the thoughts of the other members on this issue tonight. Let me say this, I, I'm willing to consider staying for a period of time to help get through this process. As I indicated last week, the departments are all due to have their information in by, I think, February 28th, and we can, we can compile some things. The big issue with the budget is going to be local aid. If the local aid resolution, if there's a local aid resolution that goes through this year, we might have numbers from the state sometime in February. That's unclear right now with what the governor's budget's going to look like, and whether they'll be able to be a resolution that's approved by both houses and the governor. But, you know, I'd be willing to consider staying. What I'd like to do, though, is have a discussion with the council, probably next week, on what those, what, not so much what my conditions would be, but really what the council's expectations are, and then have the council hear what my expectations would be if we're going to do something like that. I'm, as I indicated last week in my letter of resignation, I'm, I'm moving to, I'm looking to do some different things with my career, and I'm anxious to do that. But at the same time, I want to be helpful to the city. I've worked hard over the last seven and a half years to bring some fiscal stability, as well as hopefully a number of other positives to the city, but, and I'd hate to see that in any way diminished after I leave. So I'd be willing to talk about it, certainly, and I suggest we'd sit down next week and do that.
And you feel the budget process is very important, don't you?
I do.
Then why did you put your, submit your resignation for March 10th and not July 30th?
There's really no good time to, there's no bad time to, there's no good time to leave. If I was leaving in July, then I'd be leaving right in the middle of the beginning of the budget year and the implementation actions that are necessary at that time. If I left a little bit later in the summer, I'd be leaving right before the bond rating. If I left in the fall, I'd be leaving right before the recap sheet has to be completed and all of the issues that go with setting the tax rate. So there's really no good time, so I chose this to sort of get a head start. The budget process will be underway, but, and, you know, I feel comfortable that I could hand over a spreadsheet to someone, but if the council would feel more comfortable with me adding some time, I would certainly consider trying to be helpful.
So let me be fair to you and give you my opinion. I personally feel you should have said, in your resignation letter, I think you should have set a later date closer to the completion of the budget, but that's simply me. That is my opinion. And I firmly believe that the person coming on board to assume the position of city manager is the person that has to live with that budget. I believe that it's only fair that this document should be crafted by the person coming in. And I remember you saying last Tuesday that you submitted requests from all the department heads to get in their budget, and I think that's a good portion of that budget, although it's not a local aid or the formula or whatever, it is a good piece of that budget. And I would hope to think that this council will be supporting someone that knows about budgets and how to put them together, because I firmly believe that your expertise, and I'm, now I'm going to give you a compliment instead of just whacking your all the time.
Oh, write it down.
Write it down, write it down, that I think that your financial skills were second to none. I'm going to tell you that. You're not completely all wrong, but you were wonderful with that. You have structured a budget, and you put it in place as a, as a professional model, not so much the other model, but the budget is the model. And you had sound stability with reserves in place, you added new data, there's meaning behind the numbers, and the budget is more understandable, and for that, I commend you. And I think it's a model that the next person, he or she coming in, would look at that and say, this is well crafted, and with the figures. And I thought that by the time March 10th would be here, a great portion of that budget would be already, you know, in place. That's why, having said that, I probably wouldn't be one of the people here that would extend it a little bit longer, so that, I'm trying to be honest with you, because I think the person coming on board, that should be their budget. I mean, I appreciate your help and all, but that's my feeling. Thank you.
Further discussion?
If I could, I'm sorry. If I could just add a little bit to this, I think that, and here's another thought that I had. I firmly believe that when a new manager comes in and they say, oh my God, they get rid of this one, they put this one in, I believe that the city manager is only as good as those that you put around you, and they complement you through their hard work. So I think we're almost there for the new city manager, he or she, to come in and sit there, because now they can hire their chief financial officer, they can hire their planning department person, they can hire so many people that probably wouldn't have been in place. So having said that, if we extend your contract, probably we would then be, we would, you would be hindering that person from putting people in, it would delay the people being brought into place. That's my opinion. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I.
I think we need these positions filled pretty down quickly, but by you staying here would hinder that process from happening sooner, and that's just my opinion.
Mr. Manager?
No, I was just going to say, I'm not sure where it would necessarily hinder it. If there's not a manager here, then they're not going to be hired, so.
Well, they wouldn't be here if you're here, right?
You can, you know, as soon as you get one, you can, you know, you can have at him. But I'll do, you know, I'd be, really, this is just to, really just to help out the council and, with all due respect to the council, to help out the city.
Counsel Kennedy and Counsel Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to support this motion, and I'm supporting this motion primarily because I think it is the prudent, the thoughtful, the smart thing to do. The budget that the city manager produces every year is a proposed budget that's presented to the city council. The budget is the city council's budget. It's not really the city manager's budget. He just proposes it to us, and we vote on it, and then we have to live with it. And I think that where the city finds itself under extraordinary circumstances at this time, because we have several personnel that were involved in the creation of the proposed budget every year, and those people are one by one leaving for different reasons, but nevertheless, they're not going to be here. So what, what should we do? In my view, the best thing is to have the city manager prepare a budget for the next fiscal year, and I don't think that that document needs to be a three-hundred-and-fifty-page document with a green cover. Maybe it can be a hundred-and-fifty pages. And I don't think that it has to have a lot of initiatives in it either, since the manager won't be here. But I, I'm not so concerned about the new city manager coming in. I guess I think that he would appreciate having a budget in place, if we can have one, or at least something, a working document, and there's always the possibility, if the new city manager wants to propose it, to do a supplemental budget, which would include initiatives on his, that he would have. I think that, you know, we're going to be at March, right now, it would be, it would be March 10th. The city council cannot create the budget itself. I don't believe that the city council is allowed to do that. We are the legislative body, so we would have to have somebody come in here and do the budget if, if the manager isn't going to. The smart thing to do is to have the city manager provide the city council with a good, solid working document that's going to be sound and that's going to, that would hold up, and then take that from then on. But I think that to do otherwise is, is, it just, it's just not a good idea at this time. And I wouldn't say that necessarily if there were other people in place, but I think that given that Mr. Moses has left, and that the city auditor is leaving, and that the manager's leaving, this is the smart thing to do. It is the right thing to do. It is, regardless of how you feel about the city manager or the situation, it is what's best for the city at this time. And so I support the motion, and I would expect that the, I feel like the city manager has a professional responsibility to stay. I mean, last week, when I received the letter, I was as surprised as most people were, and I assumed that the manager had another position to go to, but he doesn't really have another position to go to, and so he does have time at the, on the other side of March 10th. And so, in my view, and everybody may not agree with this, but I firmly believe that he has professional responsibility not to leave the city after seven and a half years with, without a budget. And Counsel Mercier brings up a good point when she, when she asked, why was March 10th the time? And maybe there is no good time, but certainly, just prior to preparing a new budget is maybe the worst time. And so, with that said, Mr. Manager, I would hope that you would stay, and at least till we get through the budget process.
Counsel Martin?
Well, I defer to the manager.
I was just going to say, Counsel, your sweet talking is really winning me over. The, and, but I, I think I've given my, I've given a professional responsibility by living up to my contract in terms of my notification and so on, and, and when you indicated, you're not sure how people, you know, it shouldn't matter how people feel about the manager. I didn't know anybody felt poorly about the manager, so. But I will, again, I'm open to having some discussions about this, so that I can provide some assistance.
Let me just say, I don't know if anybody does have ill feelings towards the manager.
You certainly don't.
I was just, I was just throwing it out there. No, and I, you know, sweet talking would probably come from me after you tell us that you're going to stay, not before.
Counsel Rock, then, oh, Counsel Martin, sorry. Counsel Martin, then Counsel Rock, then?
So I, you know, I think, to Counsel Kennedy's point, it really isn't about, I think, how, you know, personal feelings or even professional feelings between the manager or any counselor. It's really what, what is in the best interest of the city right now. And I think, certainly, the city manager has critics. He's, he has critics on this council on various subjects from time to time, but one of the things that we hear almost universal praise for is his financial management ability. That comes from the strongest critics of the city manager. And so to me, why wouldn't we, if we're acting in the best interest of the city, try and take advantage of that for as long as, as we could? And certainly, as we're entering into a new fiscal year, again, in my time here, local aid has been. aid has been a challenge. It's been a challenge since the economic downturn 2003. We don't know what it's going to be like this year. I realize, you know, the governor's budgets and our state delegation have been very good about level, more than level funding, but improving funding for the school department, and we're very appreciative of that, but that brings its own challenges for the rest of the budget, because as local aid to the schools goes up, the local contribution to the schools has to go up, and that means, you know, priorities need to be adjusted elsewhere. And this manager has done a very good job with that, and if he's willing to stay on and assist this council, I think that is in the best interest of the city. And with all due respect to the department heads, and they're all capable in their own way, but when they go, when the things go out to them for what they want and the budget, it's to some extent a wish list. Every department head thinks they could do more if they had more resources, and it's some, someone has to balance that citywide. What, you know, do we really need more police versus, you know, more work at DPW, more parks, fire, all worthy causes, but there needs to be a balance in place, and someone who understands the whole picture needs to be the one to sort of set those expectations within the departments. All the department heads are going to be advocates for their own department. So I think this, this does help the city along if it can get a budget in place. I happen to think it would be doing a favor to whoever the next city manager is, although I don't think that should be the motivation here. I think the motivation, I think Counsel Kennedy said, well, it's, it's what's in the best interest of the city, and I think if the manager would assist through the budget process, that is in the best interest of the city.
Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Counsel Lahey, and Counsel Samaras and Belanger.
Mr. Mayor, through to the manager. Mr. Manager, so we don't get an answer from you tonight, no matter what the vote is, you say you prefer to wait a week to, to talk about certain conditions or whatnot?
Expect, the expectations of each side, yes. I'd like to do that in closed session.
So are we a little early in voting for this? If, if, you know, say for example, your conditions, you know, if Counsel Kennedy, Counsel Mercy, Counsel Martin may change their mind based on conditions or not, I just don't know if it's the right time to, to take this vote, if you don't give us the answer whether you're going to stay or not, or what your conditions are for staying?
Uh, Mr. Manager?
I, I guess, Counsel, I would say that you can, you can, those that, you know, are interested in asking me to, to consider doing this, should vote yes. And then after we sit down and talk, if my expectations are too onerous, then, they won't be, I can assure you, they should, they're, I would say reasonable, then the, the council could always say, we couldn't, we couldn't reach an agreement. Likewise, if I, when I sit down and, and I say, this is, you know, the type of help I need, this is the type of conditions or expectations I have, then, and the, the council says no, then I could say, well, okay, well, it was worth a shot, and let's, let's move on from there.
And also, so if you do agree to stay, will your end date be, is there, is there a certain end date, so come April 15th or May 2nd, you're on say?
I think that's one of the things we have to talk about, right? Because, as I say, I'd, I'm anxious to move on with some new ventures myself, so I, I don't want to be.
And lastly, if you do stay, you'll be not just here for the budget, you'll be the city manager until, not just, just the budget, you'll still handle the day-to-day operations of city government?
I, I would say yes.
Right, thank you.
Counsel Lahey, then Counsel Samaras, Counsel Belanger.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo that I feel that this is important, it's what's best for the city. I've had a discussion with you, and I respect your decision, but I'm going to support the motion, I hope we can work out an agreement. You know, we don't want to tie you down either, but I think the budget, in light of the vacancies, needs to be done.
Counsel Samaras and Counsel Belanger.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Manager, you know that the council as a whole was concerned about the timing, and, you know, it would have been preferred if it was July, if you had planned to retire. But with that said, I think the budget, and having the budget worked on now is very, very, very important, it's vital, as a matter of fact. We also need the time to hire the best person we possibly can to replace you. But I also know that anyone coming into a major position would feel a lot better if they were coming into a solid budget that they can work from, because the one thing I do know in the budget process, your department heads are very good people, but the thing is, you know, when I, as a department head, come in and say, you know, I need an extra million dollars this year, I can't survive, you know, perhaps I only need maybe a hundred thousand dollars if I need anything. Whereas sometimes a new person coming in, they're going to be besieged by every department head saying, while I was short-changed under the previous administration, you know, you know the talk, you know the drill.
Yeah.
And I think it's important to have somebody that has an idea of what the needs are of the city, that has always established a good budget and a good process. So I have no doubt that the process would be clean, and I will vote to support your staying. I think at this particular point, this juncture is vital, and it would, I think, attend to a lot of matters and allow us to be able to do the best that we can. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, I'm going to just get a couple more counselors. Counsel Belanger?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Mr. Manager, I do want to, again, thank you for your seven and a half years of service here to the city, and as my colleagues, few of them have stated, your finances have been impeccable, and I would agree with that. But a week ago from tonight, you gave this council your resignation, with three, three freshman counselors, two, I might add. Your contract stated July 31st, okay? You are opting out, you are giving proper notice according to your contract, I would agree, but technically, you are not fulfilling your obligations of the contract, which is, again, another reason I don't support contracts. At the end of the day, they are worthless, but that's the topic for another day. This council deliberated from 5:30 to 6:30 today about a plan of the hiring process for the manager. I think we've made great strides, and I am prepared to go forward with that. I, I am not denouncing the manager's budget he would propose, I'm sure it would be top-notch, that's not the issue. But an incoming manager, in my opinion, should have his fingerprints on this budget. There's a few words I don't want to be hearing in the fall, winter of 2015. The previous administration, the previous administration. That's not what I want to hear six months a year down the road. So I want to hold the future manager accountable, and if their fingerprints aren't on this budget, I think that poses a problem. So I'm only one vote here. I, I think this council, I, I know it's a tough time. We, we have three, a city manager, an auditor, and assistant city manager outgoing within a few weeks. I understand what's going on, but I believe this council has the talent to pull through this and persevere. And that's no, this has nothing to do with ill feelings, it's what I feel we can achieve, it is in the best interest of the city and the future manager. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Manager. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Malanazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with Counsel Belanger when he says that we did make great strides tonight at the special meeting, where we've got a process that's now being talked about, dates are being set. However, it looks as though we may not have a new city manager, or the earliest we could have a new city manager on board would be probably the latter part of March, and that's being very optimistic. And I would think that whoever that person is would probably have to give 30-day notice where they currently are employed. So during that 30 days, if the city manager and the council can come to an agreement that he stays and helps with the budget, during that time, whoever we select will be able to meet with the city manager, again, probably off-hours, if you will, because this person will be most likely working full-time, but to come in and, and, and talk about the budget and where we are during the month of, say, April. And we may have a May 1st start date for our new, our new city manager, and that being the case, the current city manager would bid us all farewell come May 1st. But again, we would at least have him for the next six weeks. We would have identified the new city manager, the city manager, the new city manager during the time they're giving their notice where they're currently employed can at least meet with this city manager and, and talk about the budget, be introduced to department heads through the city manager, so there'd be a, a smooth transition, a professional transition. So, again, that's the reason for the, for the, for the motion. I think that we did make great progress tonight. I anticipate we'll make great progress at the special meeting next Tuesday, and, and depending upon the, the vote, I, I would certainly hope that we can get to a point where it's in the best interest of the city to have Manager Lynch here for a, a little longer period of time, not through the end of his contract, a little longer period of time.
Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I encourage this motion consideration. I guess I prefer to know all the facts first before making a decision. I know, Mr. Manager, you want to do it in executive session, and there's a vote has to be taken on that, we probably went an hour, a week away, and then you probably know a week away after that for deciding whether you're going to stick it out or not. Is there a particular reason why you prefer to do it in closed session than here and now?
I think we, so that we can have a frank discussion, have some back and forth, and, and I'm also frankly, you know, I, I gave my notice to the, the council last week in accordance with my contract, and I, I think that's one of the values of the contract, with all due respect to Counsel Belanger, I was going to make a note of this, that if I didn't have a contract, I, I could have given my notice last week, and I wouldn't be sitting here today. I wouldn't do that, even if I didn't have a contract, but I do, and I gave my 60 days. And I did offer to meet with the council last week in executive session, so we could have some of these talks, and there was reluctance to do so, but at this point in time, so I, I have lived up to my, my contract, but at this point in time, I'd like to sit down with the council, have that frank discussion of what we do after March 10th. That's what we're really going to be talking about, what happens after March 10th. And that, I, I think that, again, talking about those expectations. And if I could, while I, while I have the floor, the, you know, I think I do, I really appreciate Counsel Belanger's comments about the previous administration, because certainly I'm not looking forward to, you know, being on a tropical island somewhere and reading about the previous administration. It's important that we give a budget that's reasonable, that's, that's something that I think is, is crucial, but at the same time, ultimately, what's going to happen with the budget, you know, I can, I can certainly be my usual self in terms of, what I consider my usual self, in terms of my projections of revenues and my projections of fixed costs and building a reasonable budget built on reasonable assumptions. But then at the end of the day, and this goes to something Counsel Samaras was saying, or that came to my mind as Counsel Samaras was speaking, ultimately, what's going to happen, you know, six months from now, seven months from now, is going to be the responsibility of the then-manager to, and the department heads, to implement the budget effectively. If suddenly there's a, you know, a, a, a departmental budget is blown through because someone isn't managing the overtime properly, or someone isn't, or someone is spending too much, then that's not the responsibility of this city manager. But certainly, if the city, the next city manager gets to a point where I make a, an assumption that, you know, utility costs are going to be X, and I'm off by some crazy number because I didn't properly budget that, or if I have a revenue in there that doesn't exist, that's a problem, and that's, that should fall on, on, on me. But in terms of the budget, it's, it's going to require the crafting of a budget, but then the management of the budget, and that's going to be the responsibility of the next city manager and the department heads.
One of my concerns, Mr. Mayor, through to the manager, would be if we, say we did have a, a new city manager April 1st, April 10th, you know, would you intend to work with that person until, you know, June 30th, July 31st?
No, I, I wouldn't, no. If you had a new manager here on April 1st, I'd be, you know, I'd, I'd walk out the door.
But you expect to have the budget completed by then?
Well, no, I, I can't complete the budget if there's not all of the, the revenue numbers in yet from the state or the, there's other issues in play here. That's why we, we do the budget and it doesn't get presented to the city council until May or June, which is something we're proud of, is that we've always delivered the budget in late May, early June, as opposed to the end of June, right before the end of the fiscal year, which is, you know, is a problem. But, you know, I will, because if I can get it down the, this is what we need to talk about, but if I can get it down the road, so that they have more to go on, you know, then they're farther ahead than if they, than if, it's not.
Realistically?
Look, I, I, I'm not trying to, I, I'm not trying to sell the council on my staying, I'm just trying to, again, be as helpful as I can to the council.
Thank you.
Counsel Mercy, and then Counsel Lahey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city managers, so let me clarify this. We're in the process of having special meetings to try to establish a timeframe by which we are supposed to advertise for a city manager, and in the meantime, we're going to go into executive session at one point, not tonight, but at one point, to decide what your conditions are, and if your conditions say, let's say, for example, I will stay here till May 30th, let's just say that for a figure, a timeframe. So in the meantime, you're holding us up from, you're, are you pushing us out of?
No.
Because you said that once a city manager comes in and is hired, you'll, you'll leave. Did you just say that?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. So you move forward with your process to hire a city manager, and if...
So how does that benefit us with you wanting to stay here to help us out with a budget?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm wanting to help you. I, I'm not.
But you're not, because if we hire a city manager, you're out the door, you said.
I'm not wanting to stay, all I'm wanting to do is help you, but, and, and, look.
So you're saying that you'll help us so long as we don't have a city manager sit, sitting there, you'll leave before, when that happens?
When that happens, I'll leave.
Well, what if the budget isn't done yet?
Well, then the next, the man, if you get a manager on fast enough...
Then so how important is the budget to you if you have this attitude? You won't stay on to help this man?
Oh, if you, well, if you want me, oh, oh, if you want me to stay on and help, I...
Oh, well, no, that isn't what we said, you just said that when the new...
Because I, I'll do, I'll do what you'd like me to do, Counselor. That's something we can talk about.
Well, that's not what you said before, you said that when the person comes here and is sitting there as a city manager, out the door you'll go, even if the budget isn't done yet. So how does that help the city and the intention here?
One at a, one at a time.
For the first time, Counselor, I, I answered how I thought you wanted me to answer. I, I will do, you know, if you want me to stay longer and spend time with the city manager, I, I'd certainly be willing to do that, except that, you know, I won't be city manager anymore.
There'll be more conditions, right?
No, 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 well, these are things we need to talk about, but I, look, I'm not looking to just say, I am looking to leave, but I'm not looking to, I, I'm trying to be as helpful as I can here, you know, so I'll leave it up to the council to decide.
I understood what you were saying, Mr. Manager.
Counsel Mercy?
Until the time comes that we have someone here, even if the budget isn't finished, you said you'd leave.
Mr. Manager?
If, I feel like a referee up there.
Maybe it's just me that I interpreted it wrong, but...
Or a moderator. The, no, I, I, well, I do think that if you hire a manager and get a manager on here, it's better if it is their budget. But at the same time, I, I don't think you should, I, I, the, the goal here isn't for me to, the goal shouldn't be for me to prepare a budget that I then, you know, well, you know, the city manager will be sitting here, and I'll be sitting here, you know, telling him or her, this is your budget, I'm going to run this through the city council, and they're going to approve it, and then I'm walking out the door after it's approved, and you're stuck with it. If the manager comes on soon enough, I'd be happy to work with the manager and show him or her what I, what we've got, walk them through it, walk through, through the, with the departments, and if they agree with what I've put forward, but if, if the manager comes on soon enough, the manager should be the one that's presenting it.
That's why I'm not supporting you to stay on. That's my whole, you, you made my case for me, Mr. Manager.
Okay. Counsel Lahey, then Counsel Kennedy.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that the motion reads consideration, so we're just considering to sit down and have a frank discussion. I agree, if for some reason we find the person we want, they're not obligated to stay and they show up February 15th or March 15th, then good, they're here, and it's their budget. But if we hire somebody, they have to give 60-day notice, they can't get here until June 15th, we need to have a budget, so that's what I'm asking. Let's sit down, let's have the discussion, and I understand everybody's point, but we're just voting to consider. I may not like the terms next week, but we should sit down and see what it is, and... I may not like the terms next week, but we should sit down and see what it is, and we're all having, we all are here for the same intentions, we all are saying it different ways.
Counsel Kennedy, then Counsel Rourke, and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, this motion right now is just to determine whether or not there's a majority of the city council that's interested in having the manager stay for the budget process. If the motion fails, there's nothing else to talk about. But if the motion were to pass, and it seems, at least right now, like it will, then we would talk to the manager about it. I guess he would prefer that that be in executive session, and if there's then agreement from a majority of this council, then we would move forward from there. The, and that's, so that's all we're doing tonight, is just going in to talk. I mean, people that vote for this motion tonight, after they've met an executive session with the manager, they might change their mind and say, you know what, you know, I just can't do that, let's just go a different way. Likewise, people that don't vote for this motion this evening, when they get in, may see the value in having the manager stay for a certain amount of time. The number-one thing that this city council does is that, is the municipal budget. It's more important, and you mentioned this early on in the, I think in the special meeting, Counsel Mercy, that it was one of the three things. The budget is the number-one most important thing. And we're also, so we're in the budget season, which was, which is a lengthy process and takes some time to do if you're going to do it correctly, and at the same time, concurrently with that, we're in the process of selecting a city manager. I don't want to be rushed into selecting a city manager just because I'm worried that the budget's not going to get done in time. At the same time, I don't want to end up just saying, let's stop it right now, get a new city manager, and tell that city manager, here's the department head request, can you have something next Tuesday? It's just not fair, but it's not, it doesn't really matter if it's fair to the new manager or to him. It's not what's best for the city. What's best for the city is that we move forward with the budget process, and if the manager's switched, then that's all fine and good. There's no reason why that can't be almost seamless. But to just, to not do, basically, what would happen is the budget process is going to stop until the manager, until the manager, the new manager is selected. I just think that that's wrong. But the motion tonight, the vote right now, is only whether or not to talk to the manager about it, and then make a decision in another vote later on.
Counsel Rourke, and then Counsel Leahy, would you come and take the chair?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To you two, the city clerk, Mr. Clerk, if everybody agrees, the manager and the council, is it possible to do this executive session on this subject tonight?
American procedure can bring up a vote to enter into executive session.
I prefer to have all the information before making a decision.
Clarification from the solicitor, can we go into executive session to discuss this, or does it have to be posted? The item is on the agenda.
The key thing is that the matter is on the agenda, and once the matter's on the agenda, if it needs, if part of it needs to be taken up in an executive session, it can. But I think the manager might want to jump in there, because I think he had indicated he wanted some time to.
I'd like, I need a little bit of time to...
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. I would need, I would ask that there be some time so that I could, I mean, it doesn't really affect anything, the week. I mean, we're still shooting at March 10th, and the council is still moving forward city manager search. But it really doesn't, and so, again, I think Counsel Kennedy said it perfectly. I mean, you can vote no.
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying here, man, you know?
Don't try on my behalf.
Okay.
This isn't, this isn't about me.
Thank you.
Counsel Leahy, could you take the chair, please? Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I guess the first question I would ask Mr. Manager before I get into my comments is, you have someone, you have Connor Baldwin that now is distributed the requisition, the sheets, the data sheets, and he is responsible for collecting those from the department heads once they, once they fill them out, whether it's performance, outputs, budget requests, correct? Is he the individual?
Correct. He, the sheets went out actually before Mr. Moses left and the budget instructions...
And they do the 28th?
And they do the 28th of February.
So would, knowing that, department has had their, they have the guidance, and as well as deadlines, are you going to hire somebody to manage that process? Because Mr. Moses used to hire that, used to manage all of those functions of projecting revenues, looking at all the local receipts, you know, using straw figures, whether it's from local aid or not. Are you going, or are you going to do that, or are you going to hire, are you going to hire somebody on a temporary basis? Because you did indicate you're not going to hire a CFO, first of all, nobody's going to come, knowing that another city manager is coming, and secondly, that's just not the right thing to do. So would that be your plan, to hire somebody anyway?
It would likely include some hiring of temporary help...
A temporary or a consultant, or someone of that nature. Okay. That's what my, that's what my thought was. So, I mean, with that, I have to tell you, so we're going to hire somebody else, there's going to be a cost to it, and we're going to have to, you know, accept that. But similarly, similarly that you did when you brought on Ms. Cashman, she came in, she ran the building department for a while, and then we, and then we filled that. So there is going to be a temporary hire. So there's not, there's, you know, the new CFO is not going to be there, whoever comes in with the new city manager, that is going to be a transition, that's going to be a challenge, as far as, as I would think. But my point is this, you, you did give your notice, Mr. Manager. You did indicate the reason why you did give that notice for, just from a, an organizational perspective. Somebody else comes in, they're going to hire their own CFO, they should create their budget, because as you have stated on more occasions than not, a budget is your priority. It's the chief executive officer, it's their priority. They're coming in, they're going to, you tell us on an annual basis or multi-year basis, this is what we need to do, and this is how we get there. Goals and objectives, and I envision asking the next candidate, who, whoever that is, what are your priorities? What are your goals? What are your objectives? And it all comes down to that municipal budget. It's about putting dollars in areas where that individual thinks it's important. Is it public safety? Is it going to be education? Is it going to be fires? Is it going to be DPW? And, and that is the roadmap for that city manager. So I actually agree, giving you your notice now, and, you know, and the motion reads to the end of the budget process. The end of the budget process is not complete until we set the valuation. That's when it's done. I mean, that budget is fluid all the way, right till usually late November or early December. So when we say complete the budget process, I think it's probably just the budget development process, but I believe that we started a process tonight. It is a little bit of a tight timeframe, but that was as a result of the contract, so we have to live within those means. But nevertheless, I think that we, that we should just proceed with that process, and if, and knowing that it is, it is tight, and we did learn tonight, it may, we may have to, it may not make the, we won't hire somebody by the 10th, that's, that's going to be something that we have to take a look at. My other concern, I think Counsel Mercy alluded to it a little bit earlier, and that is, between the time that March 10th and whatever that uncertain time is, what if department heads, more department heads do leave? They know, they know that you're leaving, they know that they serve at the will of the city manager. So what do we do within the next, I don't know, 30 days, 90 days, 120 days, no matter what it takes? I mean, the budget has to be in place by June 30th. What does the city do in the meantime? There are assistance, I understand that, but it just seems that we're leaving the city in a state of flux. So I think what's in the best interest of the city is to proceed with that process. You clearly have initiated, and the budget development process is well underway. There are systems in place, there are spreadsheets in place, someone should be able to, and I'm going to presume, they're going to be able to come in on day one with a CFO and say, this is where we are with the budget process, this is where we left off, and this is where you need to pick up. I can envision that will be a seamless process. So I would make a motion that in light of the process that we're discussing, the selection process, that to amend this motion to request the manager stay to April 15th. That's a month after the process is in place, it's another month into the budget development process, and by that time, we'll have a city manager in place. And again, the budget will have, be another month into it, and the transition will be a lot more smooth than knowing the 10th is going to be tight, we don't need to rush into the selection process. That gives this council another four weeks to interview and to hire somebody else, gives that prospective candidate another month, and rightfully so, if they have to give their employer a notice. And I think it's a fair compromise to try to say, okay, we need you to stay on to continue this process. It gives an opportunity for the new manager to come on, and if necessary, restructure any priorities that he may have, or she may have, and at that point, you know, we'll be able to proceed in the best interest of the city. So I'd like to make that in the motion, make an amendment to the original motion, to extend, to extend that to the managers. I guess we'd have to accept your resignation and then extend the resignation to the April 15th.
Okay. So is that a motion or an amendment that's...
Well, the motion is on the floor, so I would make that in the form of an amendment to the motion.
I need a second. I need a second. Seconded by Counsel Belangia.
Mr. Chairman?
Counsel Kennedy?
On the amendment, I'm not sure why Mayor Elliott chose April 15th. There is a lunar eclipse on that day, but I'm not sure if that was, if that's why he did it. But that's, and I can understand the intent of the amendment to the motion, but it is, there's just, I think the amendment to the motion is premature. I think that it would be more appropriate after we have the executive session with the manager and just see, and then we get a layout of just how we're going to proceed, and whether or not there's even a majority that wants to proceed. And maybe after having that discussion, it would be a better time to make a deadline of April 15th, or, you know, why is April 15th better than April 20th, or April 10th, or, or May 1st? We don't really know that, but we may have a better idea of whether or not April 15th is a good day after we meet in executive session. And so, for that reason, although I understand the intent of the, of the amendment, I can't support the amendment, but I will support the original motion.
Mayor Elliott, and then Counsel Rourke.
I did not know there was a lunar eclipse, but I'll have to get my calendar programmed to get the lunar calendar. I hope it's not tax day. I just picked the 15th, it's another month after. It's, gives the council another four weeks, and I, I think deadlines are important, because you set a deadline and you have a goal to put, put someone in place by that, by that deadline. I think we all need deadlines, we have to live by deadlines, there are deadlines everywhere. If you don't have deadlines, time keeps slipping away, slipping, slipping. That doesn't mean there's any sense of urgency, but I think you have to have some frame of reference in order to proceed, to proceed in any manner. I'm going to proceed, proceed the guidance that the manager has, even with budget development. There is guidance. There's guidance to department heads, there's guidance to, from the CFO, all the way down the chain. So there's no, there's no rhyme or reason to it, it was just giving an additional four weeks plus from, from the manager's resignation date, and that's the only purpose. So I think it's important to have a deadline, to have something to measure against and, you know, hold our feet to the fire, so it just doesn't continue to dwindle. But I guess my concern, I just want to reiterate, we're going, presumably, if the other department heads leave, what are we going to do? Continue to leave those vacancies open? You know, that's, that's not how government should operate. It should be, you know, there should be a good transition timeframe, and we've put that, we've put that in place, and I think we should follow it.
Counsel Rourke?
I appreciate Mayor Elliott's motion. We could vote that motion 9-0, but without your approval, where does it go? You could say April 15th. No, I'm out of here, I'm out of 10th. And again, you know, in wanting to, I guess, you know, vote for this Counsel Milazzo's motion, my only concern, and I'm sure you can understand, is just knowing everything that's involved in making that decision. So I don't know if this vote here, and this motion is premature, or we should have that conversation first with the manager, but just, you know, once again, knowing all the facts is probably the best way to move forward, and until that happens, I don't know if I can support Counsel Milazzo's motion. Thank you.
Chairman?
Counsel Kennedy?
Let me, my understanding is that the manager gave us a letter of resignation last week, and that the 60 days ends on March 10th. And it's my understanding also that the manager has no intention of extending that time for any other reason, or, or taking back that letter of resignation. So I guess I think that the, it just would make more sense, and we could probably decide on a date after we have the meeting with the manager, rather than that we can now, and that it might be more constructive to do it then, rather than just now. Again, the original motion that's on the floor is merely to, to talk to the manager and just, just go forward from that. And then after that, people can change their minds, and it's a whole new game. But it seems that that's what I would like to do.
Thank you. Counsel Milazzo, then Counsel Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Procedurally, I know we have an amended motion on the floor, but at some point, I would like to, as the maker of the motion, amend my motion, if I could. I don't know if you want me to share with the council what I'm thinking at this particular point in time, but I think Counselor, Mayor Elliott brought up a good point about the language of the motion, it talks about the completion of the FY15 budget. I'd be happy to amend that to talk about, consider staying and assist in the development of the FY budget, FY15 budget, so that, again, I think we're all trying to get to the same place here, that we're going to have his assistance until we hire a new city manager, and then when that person gives his or her notice where they're working now, that he would be available to meet with that person. And again, once we have the meeting with the manager next week, we can probably all agree on a date, but it would not be, as the mayor indicated, the completion of the FY15, but would assist in the development of the FY15 budget. And again, appropriate time procedurally, I would, I would offer that as an amendment.
Counsel Mercy?
Well, for two reasons, I wouldn't support the amendment or the original motion, even if, it sounds good, though, the original motion did sound good amended. But if the manager stays, he is adding value here, I understand that. But in my opinion, if you stay, Mr. Manager, in my opinion, and maybe it's just me, but you're delaying the hiring of those other administrative positions. That's what I feel. And having said that, I still firmly believe that I can't support something that I don't know what the condition is. I don't know what that condition is, and I can't support something unless I have all the pieces of the puzzle together. Maybe it's me, I just can't do it.
Counsel Samaras?
Thank you. I think there are two important things that are out there right now. One, that the budget process has to begin, it has to be ongoing, and it has to be outlined as best as possible. Two, the hiring process has to begin, and it has to be written out in such a sense, or developed in such a sense, that it gives the community input, it gives us time to make the best choice. I think what's being offered here by the motion is that we would be able to take advantage of the city manager's... of the city manager's knowledge of budgets and of the budget. I think it's a win-win for everybody. I think win-win for everybody in the sense of whoever becomes the new manager, he or she will be able to step into an ongoing process that will be well-developed, overlooked by us, and be able to hit the road running with the manager available to help fill in any gaps that are necessary. With that said, regarding the hiring of the new manager, it is vital that this budget be outlined and be outlined well. I mean, there's talk of other department heads possibly leaving. That can happen. So, it goes even more so that we need somebody to head this process that has the ability to deal with each one of those departments. So, I see it as a win-win situation for all of us. What I spoke about at the beginning was that I wish that the city manager had finished off in July. That would have been the perfect scenario, of whatever reason, certain things happen. He chose that. But with that, we see very clearly that we just cannot rush the process. If we rush the process, I think the citizens of Lowell will be concerned and upset. But I think if we show them that, one, the budget process will continue, it will, it will be supervised by someone who has a clear record of doing a great job on the budget, we have that going. They'll see the city council working well in establishing their goals and objectives as to who they, what they would like to see in the next city manager. And we'll, we'll also be showing that we're going to give the time for the process to happen, and the time and the availability of coordination when that person comes in, because that doesn't often happen. I think the manager knows when, any, or anybody knows when they're going into a new job. If they're going into a job and they're able to work with the former CEO, I mean, better things happen. It's, it's, it's a simple process. So, I would support this motion, I think it's important at this point.
Thank you. Mayor Elliott?
With the question.
On the amendment, on the amendment first.
Amendment first. Do you want me to clarify the amendment?
Sure.
Motion to, to amend the original motion by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Counsel Belanger, amend a motion to allow, to, to allow, to request the manager to stay until April 15th. Counsel Leahy?
No.
Counsel Martin?
No.
Counsel Mercy?
No.
Counsel Milazzo?
No.
Counsel Rourke?
No.
Counsel Samaras?
No.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Count, Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
No.
Two yays, seven nays, fails.
Roll call on the original motion?
I think there was an amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Procedurally?
The amended.
The amended motion. Again, request the city manager to consider staying to assist in the development of the FY15 budget.
Okay, roll call on that.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
No.
Counsel Milazzo?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
No.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
No.
Mayor Elliott?
No.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Five yays.
Five yays, motion carries. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, item number 26, by Counsel Rourke. Request city manager not enter any contracts or extend any contracts, and not make any appointments or reappointments to any boards or commissions. Motion by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Kennedy, as a registered speaker.
Nancy Pitkin.
Yes. Could you please just state your name and address?
My name is Nancy Pitkin, and I live at 26 Way, Villaville, in Lowell. I am currently the Chair of the Board of Trustees for the Pollard Memorial Library. And I'd like to address the issue of appointments to city boards, particularly the Pollard Memorial Library Board of Trustees. There are currently only six members. Actually, when I wrote this this afternoon, there were six members. Now, there are seven members on the board. Two members resigned, one because their job takes them out of the country for extended periods of time, and the other was transferred unexpectedly to Arizona. I think I would have taken it, too. The third resignation was from a member who was appointed to complete a term that expired in December. As you can see, people have good reasons for leaving boards and resigning. When a person volunteers to serve as a library trustee, they have a passion for the library. Maybe they've always loved to read, or maybe they take their children to the library, and now they find they have either the time, or will make the time, and would like to give back to their community by being on the board of the library. Every one of the six current members of the board are committed to the library, and our main function is being advocates for the people of Lowell. We would like to have a full board to carry out this charge. I urge you to continue to support appointments to the Board of Trustees of the library. Thank you.
Thank you. On the, any other, or the speakers, on the motion? Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Ms. Pitkin. Mr. Mayor, when this motion was made, it was made with the idea of the manager leaving in March. In light of the previous motion, and wanting to hear from the city manager, whether it be in executive session or in a public meeting, I would move to withdraw the motion tonight, but probably expect it to be back on the list somewhere in the, in the future if the manager does give us a date. Thank you.
Okay, motion to withdraw the motion, motion to withdraw by Counselor Kennedy. Withdraw the second?
Yes, I'll withdraw the second. I, although I think it was a good motion, I think that maybe if the, the motion was amended, it would have been fine. But if the maker of the motion wishes to withdraw, I have no objection.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that the maker of the motion withdrew that, although the intention, I understand, was significant and fair. On the other hand, for example, I, I think that it's only fear that we don't want someone in place that's going to leave to, like, stack the deck with his friends before he leaves. I'm not saying that, Mr. Manager, that you would do that.
Have any friends?
Have any friends?
Yeah, you don't have any, any more friends.
To Counsel Kennedy.
There you go.
Know how I'm there.
Good one, that's a good one. But the ordinance that we have on the agenda this evening are going to a public hearing. So, they're probably, that probably would have been safe, because it's on there before this motion came forward. But then, it's slated for a public hearing, and if they passed, you would have to sign the much-needed paperwork, right? So, you would have to sign that. And then, there may be contracts that you're close to coming to fruition, 1705, 2532, the firefighters, no doubt. So, I would have made an amendment to that motion, whether it, he didn't withdraw it. It's very, very important that you're this close, and this motion could have probably stuffed, snuffed that out, I wouldn't have wanted to. Then, there are contracts pending in the city that are close to being finalized, and they're time-sensitive situations, so that was a wise move. I know the intention was pure, but, and not malicious. I understand that. You will never, I will say it for two years, but, but, but that's the intent, and so, I'm glad you did that, because there's a lot of things in play here that, there's a lot of contracts that are out there that have to be finalized, and after the fact, he would have to be signing them. So, I do understand that. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion? Moving to the next item on the agenda, it's executive session, number 27, executive session regarding pending litigation, public discussion of which could have had a detrimental effect on the city's position. Motion, let me also inform the public that, and I'll entertain a motion to first go into executive session by Counsel Mercy, seconded by Counsel Milazzo. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Excuse me, roll call, roll call on the executive session first. And we will also adjourn from the executive session following the executive session. Okay? Roll call.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Milazzo?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
That's nine.
Nine yays, motion carries.
No, 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 from there. No motion to adjourn, you're doing that.
Thank you very much, have a good night.